It's going to be a really sunny, sunny Saturday. And with lots and lots going on, right before we go any further, right next to me here is the world famous Sheppie FM on 92.2.
Hello, my name is Dolly White, I'm the acting chair of Sheerness Town Council, who has put the event on today. And before it all kicks off, I just wanted to take a couple of seconds to really appreciate every single person that's turned up today and supported this event. Obviously, the weather is not in anyone's control. So I think you really ought to have fantastic capital back for coming out today and supporting Sheerness. And especially like to highlight, for instance, the Scouts for bringing some fantastic resources to the day. And also our fantastic entertainment. There's going to be some posts going out on social media to advertise the event today. But most importantly, however it goes, we want to thank you for coming. And you're always welcome in Sheerness. And that's the most important thing to take from today. Is that Sheerness is open for business, Sheerness is open for community, and Sheerness is local and open for you. Thank you very much.
A huge round of applause for that, thank you very much. And we have this man here, let me just... Come on, have a chat with him. Oh, is it very cold out there?
Oh, it's going to be a lovely day.
Is it?
Lovely day.
These raining balloons. Balloons. And then, what's your name?
So my name's Magic Al, and I'll be walking around, making balloons, juggling, making some bubbles, just having some fun. So if you want to give anything a go, just come and see me, and we can do some drinks.
That sounds absolutely brilliant, Magic Al. Yeah, thank you very much. We look forward to coming and trying to catch up with you, trying to reach you.
Yes.
And we've got over here Nick Cook's Circus Free Play, Free Play All Day. That's the Circus Workshop over there.
Yep, that's it.
Yep.
Hello.
Just going over here to Circus Performance Spots. And this is going over here. And if you've got a pop up, how many can you park? Five all. You win a prize every time. That's good. And there's also a pub over here, outside these pub over there.
Yes.
This one.
There is.
And they've been going, I believe, since 2008.
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes, we're happy to.
You do a lot of rescue people, don't you?
Yes, we help the townspeople when they're in bad weather. We know it's getting them their jobs. All things like that. Yeah, we deliver water on the island when you had no water. And it's generally helped the public where we came.
You're absolutely fantastic, John.
Thank you.
And you can tell me if you'd like to go and talk to him.
We have to help us, help our lads as well, and things like this, we always need helpers. So you don't have to have to call my daughter to help us out.
That's what I said. And another thing you notice people are discovering while we're running, there's some sweets on top.
We certainly...
It's usually the right height for me to take. We need to bring the sweet up.
Perfect for you, perfect.
And sugar as well.
Yes, yes.
So you can play that as well.
They certainly can. You can either stick them on one of those if you like, and have your photo.
I'll do that, they don't, that's very much, I'm a hoarder. Mention to me that the fire brigade have parked over here. And if you'd like to have a look inside the fire brigade, perhaps even a sound then. That's a fan, a fan, a fan. And it's just over there, I'm going to speak to a man named Alan. And and they'll be very, very pleased to let you know all about the fire service. Even if you'd like to be employed at the fire service, you can make an inquiry over there. And I recommend that, it's a great job to do, you really do have to do that. Royal Air Force air cadets are here. You can contact them on 0179568282. For that to be involved with the Royal Air Force air cadets. The Royal Air Force Air Cadet Store. It's only a prize. Everyone's a winner. So, a winner goes. The Royal Air Force air cadets store. Everyone's a winner. It's a pitch, a couple tickets, everyone's a winner. And a prize goes. The money goes to... Everybody.
Hello.
Hello. And then, you can visit here. And you've got a run through over here. I gave the name of the kangaroo.
Thank you, my lovely. I'll see you later.
Okay.
You need to send a logo over here.
We're looking for home?
I think, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, might be called N.
I don't know. It's quite simple to just give the name of the kangaroo. And it's... Oh, and this is the name here. So we've got... The point is, you're getting a little... Matilda, Candy, Poppy, Candy, Barry, Louis, Cookie, Coco, Elsie, Lucy, Nora, Roxy, Sheila, Bella, Ella. And Lou, Lou, Heidi, Kathy, Sally, Evie, Hip Hop. So if you're interested in hip hop, Lou, Sheila, Kelly, Alan, Anne, Sandra, Grace, Billy, Tommy, Candy, Dixie, Patricia, Rose, Kizzy, Rita, or Shaq. One of those names is correct.
And I'm worried that if he's going to...
You come over, have a look at that, you can win a stunning kangaroo. Absolutely fantastic. Those big ears. What happens if I'm a child? It's only 50 pounds ago. I walk along here to the big, big arms. Really kind of brilliant idea. Making...
Helmets and sheep.
You look like George White.
George White.
I like it.
Very well, thank you.
I'm meeting Chris Reed at the moment. And this... Can people make their own?
Um, yes, well, we help them.
Yeah?
We help them.
What a brilliant idea, isn't it?
I just had a mobile phone handed in, so I was hoping to do a show. It looks just like them.
So you can afford that, and make your own, and shield and helmet. And it's a free workshop.
Free workshop.
Absolutely free here.
Sponsored by Sheerness Town Council.
Pardon?
Sponsored by Sheerness Town Council.
It's sponsored by Sheerness Town Council. They're doing a lot today. Big cheer for Sheerness Town Council. Bigger than that. Hit it! Even bigger than that. Hit it!
Hooray!
And you can support us by buying our raffle tickets. Lots and lots of prizes. Lots of jewelry. Second prize, we have £200 coin here. What is the price of it? Oh, the first prize is down here. It says, it looks like some makeup, yeah? But the second prize is down there. And on here, there's a wash, it's a chance, a third prize. This is like, there's a live wash here. So it looks like maybe that's the third prize, the fourth prize, yeah? That's good to get your own wash, yeah? Lovely. It's all happening in this world of protection. Stop. We might run it, run it range. Over here to my left, we have a circus workshop. If you'd like to have a go, red spinning, juggling, jigging, anything you want to do. Still walking, you can stand, you can still walk. And then when you're ready, you can change the one that you have. It's great. You can do it, still walking. Hello. I'm the Harmony Therapy Trust. This is a ward, wouldn't you dare to... And they have a raffle going on at the moment. How are you?
Yeah, well, thank you.
Yes, the Harmony Therapy Trust, we are, a charity that gives free holistic training to people with serious debilitating issues. And we're looking for volunteers, so if anyone wants to come and help us to be a volunteer in the future, come to the store and get some details, please. So that's the Harmony Therapy Trust here. If you would be a volunteer, pop over and have a chat. St John's animals are here, so if you're doing a bit in the circus workshop and you fall over, don't worry, St John's are here, they've got plenty of bandages. Or if you fall off the bonkers bike later on, we've got it all figured out, we've got bandages and everything here. Here you can see, um, not aiming, okay? John, big one, he might have passed maybe at twelve, he might have passed eight months or nine months, he might have been dead. He is still alive at home, he lives around, a colleague he talked to at home. And ten years, I think, for a absolutely good. And then, the crew of the job, what can you have to do? So then, Sophie and...
Leanne.
Leanne, and the ladies.
And Carol.
And Karen, all doing a great job here today.
There's a few more hiding.
They're hiding on the back.
They're hiding at the back.
And we know where to come, if somebody falls off the bonkers bike, yeah?
Yes, ask Philip.
Oh, Philip's here.
And David.
The other volunteers behind you are playing here.
Thank you, thank you.
And you can learn how to do CPR, I guess.
Yes, with a pillowcase.
With a pillowcase, that's a good idea. So you can just practice CPR using a pillowcase. This just gives you an idea what to do. You pump here, breathe here, open the airway. And very, very importantly, call 999.
Yes, and they are available to purchase for £3 each.
Yeah, for £3 each. And the response that you give, waiting for the... Let's see, that is a beautiful dynamic, is extremely important. Very, very important. It could be much of life for that, and help a lot.
Thank you.
And now, another one here to go, yes. So you can actually say that, yeah, very well, thank you, how are you?
Yep, good, very good.
What are you doing today?
We're Sheppie Scouts, we're here providing activities for everybody to come and have a go. And breathe, everyone's come and have a try.
Okay, and you're selling burgers here?
We are, we're selling burgers, hot dogs, bacon rolls, cold drinks, hot drinks, come and see us.
And they're all priced really, I mean, the cheeseburger, £2.50, bacon roll, £2.50. It's all very reasonable, and it's all cooked fresh. Absolutely fantastic. This arena here, right in front of me, right in front of Sheppie FM. And a quick reminder, that if you'd like to see more of the song signing group, they'll be at Sheppie Little Theatre, that's at Merrick Road, Sheerness, ME12, 2NX. And they're going to be here on Friday, the 28th of April. And they're going to be there at half past seven in the evenings. £4 or £12 for a family of four, which is good. You can get your tickets from checking us on 0179558006. And Monday to Friday, nine till five. And absolutely brilliant. Ladies and gentlemen, perhaps to start, come here with a huge cheer and a huge round of applause, please, for the song signing group. Thank you. Bigger cheer than that. Hit it! Three cheers. Hit it! Hit it! Hit it! Let's go for it, let's do it. Let's go for it, let's do it. Don't forget, if you'd like to see a bit more of the song signing, uh, group, they'll be at the Sheppie Little Theatre on Friday, the twenty-eighth of April. And all starting at half past seven, it's four pounds or twelve pounds for a family of four. Absolutely fantastic night out, not to be missed. If you'd like to find out more about the song signing, just speak to one of the members and they'll be there very best to help you out. Thank you. Quick reminder that, um, over here, we have the Sheppie FM roadshow on ninety-two point two FM. If you've got a request dedication or any special occasion you'd like to mention, come and see us here at Sheppie FM and we'll make sure that everyone knows all about it. Okay, about to start over on my left, that is to your right, um, over near the Salvation Army. The Medway Concert Brass Band is about to start their performance again. Enjoyed the first one and it's going to be absolutely great. And also, the Big Fish Band will be starting around about two o'clock today, so they aren't to be missed either. But starting now, the Medway Concert Brass Band is about to begin their performance. Thank you. Well, they had them then, the Medway Concert Brass Band, they'll be back on again in about three quarters of an hour, they're just going to take a short break. Meantime, from Sheppie FM ninety-two point two, let's have a tune.
Yeah.